Everyone, welcome to the Town of Asousis Public Hearing, December 17th, 2018, at 4:00 PM in Council Chambers. I will read the statement of the Chair, first of all. This public hearing is convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act, RSBC 2015, to allow the public to make representation to council respecting matters contained in OCP Amendment Bylaw #1230.21 and Zoning Amendment Bylaw #1085.108. Every person present who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaws. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaws. When speaking, please proceed to the microphone and commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. If they wish, members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at this public hearing is to listen to you rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws. In accordance with Council Procedure of Bylaw, representations by members of the public shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes each. If a person has additional information that he is unable to provide within that timeframe, he shall be given further opportunity to address council after all other interested members of the public have been heard a first time. Please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion during this public hearing so that we may ensure as impartial a hearing as possible. After this public hearing is adjourned, council members will not speak to the public on this matter until after the matter has been dealt with at a public meeting. After this public hearing has concluded, council may without further notice give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. So confirmation of advertising and posting requirements. Notice of this public hearing was given in accordance with the Local Government Act and the Community Charter by distributing the notice as follows. Publishing in two consecutive editions of the Asousis Times on December 6th and December 13th, 2018. Placing the notice on the public, on the bulletin boards in the town office and Planning and Development Services Department on December 5th, 2018. And posting the notice on the town's website on December 6th and distributing via e-news on December 7th, 2018. So I'll read a summary of the staff report. The purpose of this meeting is to seek public input on OCP Amendment 1230.21 and zoning Bylaw Amendment #1085.110, which received first and second readings on November 19th, 2016, 18. We're two years out. Bylaw #1230.21 proposes to change the land use designation from Comprehensive Development, CD, to High Density Residential, HR. Bylaw #1085.108 proposes to change the zoning from CD8, Comprehensive Development, to R7, High Density Residential. The zoning is being proposed to allow for a 47-unit townhouse development and 14 secondary suites. So I'm going to ask Ms. McKay to give the official public hearing report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So as previously noted, the civic address of the subject properties are 9110 and 9120 Main Street. The applicant is Kevin Welsh from Precision Building Design, and the current owners of the property are Desert Lagoons Limited. And again, the applicant is proposing to develop these two vacant parcels with a 47-unit townhome development. It's proposed that 14 of the townhomes will have basement suites. It's anticipated that these suites will provide much-needed market rental housing for local residents. The suites will also provide for mortgage helpers for some of the owners. Each suite will have its own designated parking spot or designated parking pad. With respect to the policy content, the official plan, current proposal, if approved, would see these properties returned to their previous designation of High Density Residential. The HR designation is consistent with properties to the north and the south adjacent to Peanut Pond. In accordance with the plan's residential policies, the OCP seeks to accommodate a range of densities throughout the town. Higher-density developments are encouraged to locate close to the town center and within walking distance of daily needs, such as groceries, medical and dental offices, et cetera. The proposed rental suites are in line with the town's policy on encouraging affordable rental units to be located within walking distance of the town's amenities, including public transportation and public schools. With respect to zoning by law #1085, the proposed zoning of High Density Residential will allow for a maximum of 75 units per hectare. The 47-unit townhome development, in addition to the 14 rental suites, is well within the maximum densities permitted for this site of 2.3 hectares. Access. Vidette Drive will serve as the primary access to the proposed development. Vidette Drive requires a full reconstruction for this purpose. Attachment 5 to my report demonstrates the proposed improvements to Vidette Drive overlaid on an aerial photograph. The town and the developer will be cosh sharing these improvements. A future pedestrian trail is proposed along the edge of Peanut Pond. A public easement and the construction costs for the trail will be secured across the property as part of the subdivision process. Actual construction of the trail will not take place until such time as the mobile home park at 9102 is redeveloped, at which time the town will secure the trail connection to 89th Avenue. There are no plans to redevelop the mobile home park at this time. The rationale for the recommendation is as follows. Staff have recommended approval as the proposed amendment to the OCP and zoning by law will return the lands to the previous zoning and will enable a new townhome development in our community. The development will take advantage of this prime location within walking distance to Lakeview Plaza, Gateway Plaza, the downtown, and public transit. Implications for the community are as follows. The developer held the public information meeting on November 29th from 6:30 to 30:00 PM. Neighboring properties were notified of the meeting organizationally. Final adoption of the amending bylaws would not take place until the information required through the development permit process has been received and reviewed. The applicant will also be required to secure any offsite improvements prior to subdivision approval. With respect to the budget, the proposal has no immediate impacts to the budget. However, the town's portion of the improvements to Vidette Drive will be discussed in a future report to council. Significant dates. Following this public hearing, council may convene into a special open meeting, at which time third reading of the amending bylaws may be considered. Sustainability. Town policy for residential growth and development includes encouraging higher-density developments to locate close to the downtown area. And the options before council this evening are council may convene into a special open meeting following the public hearing and give third reading to both the OCP Amending Bylaw and Zone Amending Bylaw. And other options include council may defer giving third reading to the amending bylaws until a later date. Council may also request further revisions to the many bylaws proceeding further, and council may request that the bylaws be abandoned. And the recommendation at this time is dependent upon the input received at the public hearing, but staff are ready to recommend option one depending on the input received. Thank you, Mayor McCordough.
Thank you. So next, we have identification of some correspondence received, and that was included in the package. So there are two letters that have been written in there. Birgit Arnstein and Ken Murray, and those are included in the package, so I will not read them. And we would, I believe that the applicants are here, and the, if they would like to come up to the microphone and speak, please do so.
Would like to, or?
You go right ahead. And please state your name and your address, if you are from Asousis, and would you like to give your name to everybody if they don't know, please?
Yeah, it's PL Meindertsma, just my initials. It's a long Dutch name, and I live in Abbotsford, Unit 24, 3755 Clearbrook Road. And I am in the process of doing my due diligence to see if the town will accept a proposed development. Since the summer, in conjunction with the town, as well as local realtors, trying to devise a plan that we thought would be feasible, we've come up with a 47-unit townhouse development. I'm not going to repeat all of the comments that Ms. McKay, as she did in her report, because it's, she did a great job. The, as part of our due diligence process, we do all of the standard environmental reports, the geotechnical slope stability supports, rar setback areas, environmental contamination. So we satisfied all of our needs in terms of the conditions. The prior development that was approved had all of their studies done, including traffic impact studies, which were, I'm not sure they were ever final completed, but we did talk to Minister of Transportation to discuss access off the highway, and they would not allow access off the highway. However, the site does need an emergency exit, so we do have an emergency exit coming out onto the highway in case of emergency. The public information meeting, we had boards that identified the current approved zoning and what was proposed, along with what we're hoping to propose. We had 20 to 25 people come out. We had them check in with their addresses, so we knew where they were located. We had 10 comment cards left behind. Five of the 10 comment cards were people leaving their address wanting to purchase a home in the development, and the other five were a combination of concerns with traffic on Vidette, the environmental area along the lake, and a few trees that are currently on the property. We had a chance to discuss the matter with those people in terms of the currently 200, I think 240 units, 240 units in the traffic of that versus the 47 townhomes and the suites would not have, being obvious, of course, wouldn't have as much of an impact. The, anything within the environmental setback areas and the tree removal is all going to be done in compliance with the Ministry of Environment and Fisheries, whoever else has to get involved in that process. We, we are a development company from the Fraser Valley, but we have lots of people that come and visit Asousis and have places here, so we like being here. We, we visit here, we spend money here, and then we go back to the lower mainland. We've done lots of developments, so this isn't our first rodeo, and I hope I get to hear some feedback from the public and hopefully a positive outcome at the end of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now look for public presentations, and Mrs. Hilsom, could I have the list, please, of people who would like to speak? Thank you. When I call your name, if you, you've obviously signed up that you would like to speak, thank you very much, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. You will have five minutes to speak. If you are, find that you need something more to say, then we can certainly ask you to come up after everyone else has had their turn first. So Chuck, are you going to speak? Okay, thank you.
Very briefly, my name is Chuck Stam. I reside at 47635 Hope River Road, Chillicothe, BC. I had the honor of leading the design team, Precision Building Design, in preparing the site plan and some of the unit plans for the Peanut Pond project, which we affectionately refer to. If, if we could go to page nine of the PDF document, I believe that's the site plan. We visited the site several times, walked the site, tried to understand its locale and its neighborhood, did some tours through the community, as PL referred to earlier. There we go. And then we developed a plan in consultation with the civil engineers, the riparian area assessment for the setback, environmental setback to the pond. And working with the contours and with our traffic node connections, we developed a plan that gently designs along with the slope towards the pond. There's rancher units with walkout basements onto Peanut Pond, two-story units with master bedrooms on the second layer development, and the third layer is two stories with a walkout basement. And the end units have incorporated suites, along with a direct-access dedicated visitors or resident stalls. The upper level, the blue units, up against Main Street, are three-story walk-up units. And the entire architecture of the project will be along that kind of Mediterranean, Asousis-style stucco and timber that we see happening in some of the more recent developments. So I have the easy job. I get to talk about the cool stuff, and PL is going to answer any tough questions. If there's any questions on design, we're here to listen and hear the feedback from the public and hopefully go forward.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure if you're, which person I should be asking this. So the terrain of the property kind of cascades down into Peanut Pond, there's quite a grade there. I'm wondering about collection of stormwater and what your plan is for that. I always worry about spills within the park area and how it's going to be handled and mitigated at the end of the day, and I'm wondering if you could give me a little bit of a review of that.
PL, you want to?
Obviously, the wrong person, I'm sorry.
Well, we don't have our civil engineer in attendance. I can answer it from a typical perspective. We have onsite stormwater management with infiltration that puts it back into the aquifer. There'd be soil silt separators and all those kind of mandatory procedures put in place into the civil design, but it would be self-contained onto the site. It wouldn't be running freely into Peanut Pond. Maybe Gina can answer this, a little bit technical.
Okay, I'll get a shot, thank you. Counselor Rhodes, we have requirements under our subdivision control bylaw that specify that all water must be contained on-site, and as mentioned by Chuck, the appropriate separators in place to, to prevent a leaching of any contaminants into Peanut Pond. So that's a requirement of our subdivision bylaw, and those engineer drawings are a requirement prior to final approval.
Okay, is that all right? Counselor Harvey.
Has a traffic study been done as part of the overall planning and development?
I am not in receipt of a traffic study on this development. There was one done on the original CD zone, but I am not in receipt of one on this particular subdivision.
Was that done originally, 10 years ago?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough, yes. A traffic study was done for the previous proposal. Given the decreased number, less than one-quarter of the previously approved proposal, and the fact that the previously approved proposal also included a large commercial component, we did not require a traffic study be done for this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will go down the list now, and Kevin Fleming?
Thank you, counsel. My name's Kevin Fleming. I live at #81080 Vidette Drive. And my concern is, I don't have a problem with the development. It's, it just seems unreasonable to me that you can develop this property and have no access to Highway 3, other than Vidette Drive and Valiant Lane. And I live on Vidette Drive. Ninety percent of the traffic that comes down Vidette Drive is just using it to get to Highway 3. And when this, if this development goes ahead, I believe that 90% of the people coming out of that development are going to go right to that park up Valiant Drive and to the highway. It's, it's going to be a mess. In the summer, there's, there's freight trucks parked there. That drive, to me, it looks like it's about 20 feet wide, and I think that's going to be a major problem. My other main concern is having a, you know, I noticed that a lot of the, my concerns are in this letter from Birgit Arnstein. On one side of Vidette Drive, people double park because there's not enough parking. And on our side, it's the same problem. Everybody backs out onto the, onto the road. If you put a sidewalk down our side, it's going to be a bigger parking problem. I think, I think the council should come down and, and see what the problem is before they go full speed ahead and approve this. Those are my main concerns. It's, it just doesn't seem reasonable to me that a developer can develop this property and not have access to Highway 3, because that, the people coming out of there, they're going to go through the parking lot and get access to Highway 3, right at the, at the, that parking mall there. Why they couldn't have the same parking access down, down lower, I, it just seems unreasonable that they can develop this property and push the traffic problem onto the neighbors rather than, than fixing their own traffic problem. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. That has been brought up before, just so that you know. It certainly is one of the issues that has been discussed and in some of the letters. So I think there will be, certainly they'll be paying attention to this, and Department of Highways does have to have a say in this as well. Am I correct? Because it's close to the highway.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. I have the letter here from the Ministry of Transportation, which specifically states that no direct access to Highway 3 will be granted. They were actually not super keen on the, even the emergency access, insisted that we needed to have a secondary access for emergency service vehicles only, and obviously for pedestrians. Just so everyone's also aware, I did have a meeting with the property owner and the manager of the Lakeview Plaza, and their position is that they recognize that, you know, they recognize there is quite a bit of through traffic at this time. They do not want to have a knee-jerk reaction to the proposal at this time. What their preference is, is to monitor the situation and think about what's the best way of approaching it, rather than just come up with a poorly thought-out solution. So they recognize that, that it's already traffic that travels through Valiant Lane and through their parking lot, and they're going to monitor the situation for the moment.
There, there's already access to that property off Highway 3. There's a lane there and a, and a gate and a...
Just, just so you understand, the Ministry of Transportation must approve any rezoning proposal within 200 meters of a controlled access highway, of which Highway 3 and Highway 97 are both controlled access highways. So the Ministry of Transportation must approve this rezoning, and specifically, they stated there is no access to, direct access to Highway 3.
Well, there is direct access to Highway 3. There's a lane there, and that's the original road that went into the farmhouse that was there originally. And the previous plan you had for this property, it showed access off Highway 3. It didn't, you weren't pushing everybody up Valiant Lane to get to the highway. And just from my own experience living there, it's, the people are not going to go down Vidette Drive to get to Highway 3. They're going to cut through the parking lot, and they'll be there in a few, you know. That's, to me, that's unreasonable, but...
Well, we certainly understand, and we thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Okay, Glenn Sempt?
Counselor Glenn Sempt, 801289th Street, RSBC. I'm going to go talk to Gina for a second about your traffic study. Was the former proposal, did that have access to Highway 3 on it? Prior one that you talked about?
I can't speak to that. I have a map that shows it did, but the ministry's said that they probably would never grant that access now. They were never actually given an access permit, I can tell you that.
Okay, good. PL, with a long Dutch name, had mentioned an environmental study, but I haven't had my, been able to put my hands on it anywhere. Where do I get my hands on it?
They're not required to submit it to the public.
Because?
Because it's not a requirement of the rezoning.
So environmental impact study is not required?
It's not an environment impact study, it's just an assessment to determine the setback from Peanut Pond.
So there's no environmental conscientiousness here?
There's no environmental impact assessment required for this development proposal.
Okay, how about the endangered species that are in the pond?
There is no...
Endangered to the species, tiger salamanders that are in that pond.
We know that that has been brought up, sir, but it's just that the, the proper procedure has been followed in order to make sure that the developer has these things considered when he does it.
So we have to rely on that it's being done without us being able to see it and touch it with our own fingers and our own eyes?
You need to rely on our planner, who does a very diligent job of making sure that everything is done correctly.
Okay. Is the developer and the people that are doing this, are they, are they going to do any kind of lake improvements, fountains, or rain gardens? Because you had said that any affluents that come off are, are cleaned through the plant...
That's a requirement of the engineering drawings, not the rezoning proposal.
Well, right now, it's not done with the roads. All the roads come, all the wells and everything come off the roads into the, into the lake. Why isn't, why is there no rain gardens? They're going to get the bottom of what they're doing. That'll be a nice thing to think about. Rain gardens would be a really nice improvement for the lake, give it a little eye candy. That's a thought. Has Fisheries been notified, before you're done?
Department of Fisheries would not be notified for that because it's not, it's a, it's really a kettle, so it's not a...
Plus, it's a pond that's a lake.
It's a closed circuit.
Yeah.
Well, it's underwater aquifers, it's not closed circuit.
The Ministry of Transit, Ministry of Environment will refer to DFO if required.
Good. Thank you very much, Detective.
Thank you. Your, all of the things that you mentioned will be noted in the minutes.
Thank you very much.
Lorna McKay?
I'm not going to go up because my neighbor basically said...
Oh, can I go for one more thing?
Just a minute, let me go through the list first, and then if somebody would like to speak after, you can. And Michael Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not adjacent to the development, but I certainly have some concerns about it. I wonder if the developer has, has shown council the rationale for all the three-bedroom units that are on the site. We, and what, what target group they, they see as occupying these units. One of the concerns when, when you get someone coming in from the, from the coast is, are they going to build vacation homes? Are they going to, are these going to be filled with permanent residents? Are they going to be trying to give family housing to the people that we want family housing for? So I, I really like to hear from council as to whether the developer has presented any kind of documentation, statistical analysis that shows that, you know, there's a need for these three-bedroom units particularly.
I believe it's because of the, with families. Am I correct, Ms. McKay, is that there's a variety of, of house plans that are, that are being presented?
Well, they're all three-bedroom.
There are a variety of house plans that are being submitted, yes.
Yeah. And definitely that was looked at. And there, there are specific things that were said in the report about who could occupy the homes and who could rent them. So I believe that's being looked at. Am I correct, Ms. McKay?
Yes.
When you say "in the report," is that the modest little report that we have here?
Well, there was a, there was a longer one that was brought at the, at the other meeting.
I'm, I'm not sure what your question is. Are you asking us if we're going to restrict who can purchase these?
I, I, I think that it would be nice if there was some clear, clearer target audience and target consumer.
Well, I think that the applicant should speak to who he wants us to purchase the homes, rather than the person just that processes the application.
But definitely, the rental places would not be allowed to be rented out on a nightly or a weekly basis, if that's one of the concerns.
That is one of the concerns that I hadn't voiced yet, but thank you. In that case, would there be some kind of minimum rental period that would be, the town would, would negotiate as part of the approval?
That would be, that would have to be included in the strata bylaws? We don't regulate that. Like, we put, we, we would regulate, we don't regulate it in the same way you would a basement suite, for example. I think I'll let the applicant speak to that as well.
So the applicant is listening to the questions, and will have an opportunity to come up after and presumably address those?
That would be, that would be really desirable. Actually, the town, I think, does have a six-month rental minimum, if I recall.
I don't think it's...
No, not only for commercial properties, for the RV parks, et cetera.
The other is that the trail, in the previous, the previous development permit, there was, if I recall, dedicated space along Peanut Pond that was, in fact, going to be ceded to the town. Now, the idea of having a trail is a good one. The, not, not developing it and not, and waiting until a redevelopment, future redevelopment of the, of the trailer park, I think, is not wise, for two reasons. First of all, you can easily, and I think that a little, if I follow the gray line properly on the picture, it looks like it goes to the end of the property and then comes up along the side of the property to Highway three. If it doesn't, it could. I think the last thing you want to do is to redevelop an affordable housing site, which is the, the trailer park. In fact, council has in the past put on protection for people who live in such sites, so that they won't be redeveloped out of a home.
And I'm not sure who owns that trailer park, but that is, that would, if they wanted to redevelop it, it would have to come to the planning department, is my prediction.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, my point, I have two points. One is, don't wait to develop the trail until that happens, because I don't think it should happen anyway, but there's no reason to wait to some future date. You can easily complete the trail, bring it up along the periphery, right at, right at the, at the property line, and the public can have access to it. I don't, I don't want to wait, I don't have twenty years to wait to take a walk along Peanut Pond.
So, I see that there is a trail coming up the side of the property, is just not in, across Peanut Pond yet, am I correct? Is that, is that what we're waiting for?
Just to clarify, the trail on the side of the property is not intended for public. The only public trail that would be proposed in the future would be to connect Vedette Drive with, with the town along behind the mobile home park, but it would not be constructed until such time as the mobile home park develops, redevelops, and there's no plans for that redevelopment of that mobile home park at this time.
So, there's no plans for a trail?
Not for, not at this time?
Yeah, so I, and I disagree with that. I think that's reprehensible. Because, you know, the question really is, what amenities and what is the town receiving as a result of this, this development? Before, there was all kinds of benefits the town was going to get, and I see no benefit here. You've got a trail that, that isn't going to be connected, and it's only some future time, so it just doesn't sound wise to me.
Okay, well, thank you.
And I will await the developer answering some of these questions.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
So, that was the end of my list, so Mr. Sempt, if you would like to come back up, if you had something more to add, and then I will ask for the developer to speak.
Same address, haven't moved. So, this gentleman again, PJPL with a long Dutch name, had mentioned that there was notifications made to people on the pond. I live on the opposite side of the pond, I'm at eight zero one two. There's sixteen homes on the pond, I have five people from, on the left here. None of us are notified. I'm just curious why I'm sitting here on the third meeting instead of the first and second, without notification of anybody, when we're told. The paper, I believe, specifically says that there's notifications made to everybody on the pond.
Notifications are made as required in our land use procedures bylaw, and they're made within a certain distance, in the properties across the pond or not within that distance.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Can you get your name added to this list? Does it?
I'm, did you want to add your name to the list?
Yeah.
Please come up.
My name is Jane Slater. I live at seven eight zero two eighty-ninth Street, which is one of the properties, was the property right behind Smithy's on Peanut Pond, and I've got a couple of concerns. One is, all of a sudden, there's going to be a hundred-plus people living on Peanut Pond? Peanut Pond is a treasure, right off Main Street, and I totally agree with density and how we want to have density close to town. I'm very appreciative that I live close to town, but to put one hundred people on Peanut Pond, I think that that, that we need to get a lot more information about that. I'm concerned that you didn't have a traffic study done, because you had one done previously ten years ago for a development that was four times the size. But if that development that was four-sized, four times the size, had highway access, then it's mute, because this development does not have highway access. And I guess I have a third thing. I don't know a lot about stormwater or water guards or anything, but I do know that what Peanut Pond is, is it's a lake that's formed basically because of people irrigating the orchards. So, all of a sudden, you've got forty-seven more properties irrigating right there, and gravity, it's going to drain into the pond, right? I live at the end of that pond. That pond is continually moving. There's a conduit of some sort that nobody knows where it goes or how it gets there, but it ends up in a serious lake. It's not a very big conduit. When the pond is, or lake is very low, I've gone out there and gone, hmm, oh geez, you know, I hope this thing never gets plugged up or closed off, and that's going to be even more of a concern now, I believe, if we're adding that much more water running into the pond. And this is not a case of not in my backyard, it's, I am concerned about it. Okay? Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. We will add that to the minutes, for sure.
I'm Steve, I didn't have my name on the list, but my name is Peter Hastings. I live at four one six Pebble Beach Drive, here in Asous, and I want to just say that I'm all for this development. One of the reasons is I'd like to live there. I've been looking for some time, and I know a lot of people that have, for a facility of this nature, so we can downsize from where we live now. And Asous is not offering any of this. There's one in Oliver I like, I don't want to move to Oliver. There's a few in, around Penticton, there's a number of them in Kelowna. I don't want to move to Penticton or Kelowna. The fact is that if we don't start developing this kind of thing, we're going to lose an awful lot of people who would like to come here, but have to compromise and go further north. So, I know there's a lot of technical issues and traffic issues and environmental issues and concerns that we all have, and I believe that between Gina and her group, and between you guys as counselors, and between the rest of the developers as such, I know them as respectable developers, it will come together and be something very worthwhile, and I don't think it'll fill the pond. Forty-seven units is not a lot of units for that size of property, and I think that invariably it will be very successful. As far as the path idea that, that was brought up, it would be very nice if we could extend that path all the way across. It'd be great to be able to walk to town from there, but the fact is that that's private property, and I understand, and I may be wrong, that those pieces of the property include the shoreline. It's not like we can say, I mean, in a lot of places, your property ends, the beach is, is public. I don't think that's the case there. So, in other words, we couldn't just say to these guys, "Look, keep your trailer park there as long as you want, but we're going to make a pathway." It'd be great if we could. Maybe they'd be ready to cooperate, so that their people could walk to town, too. I don't know, so it might be worth looking into. But I, I think it's great that at least there's going to be sufficient property left there by the developers for a part of, ultimately for a, for a pathway. So, just to let you know, I'm all for it, and I think everybody that doesn't live on Peanut Pond probably is, too. No offense, Peanut Pond people, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do I have to call three times? All right, before I get the applicant up, right? Okay, so I, absolutely, come on up.
Hi, Jody Rollins. I live at unit fifteen, sixty, ninety-one oh six Main. It's the Avalon Trailer Park. I'd like some clarification, please. Now, for the redevelopment, is this have to be done by the owner of Avalon Trailer Park, or?
I don't think so.
Just to clarify, there are no plans to redevelop the trailer park at this time.
But if it was to be redeveloped, it would have to be the owner of the Avalon Trailer Park to do that?
If a property's going to redevelop, you need owners, the owner's approval to redevelop the property.
So, if he decides to sell it, then whoever purchased the property, it is up to that person?
Correct. I guess that's a correct statement.
So, at this point?
There's no plans, there's, you should speak to the owner of the trailer park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, I will ask if there is anyone else who would like to speak? For the sec... Okay?
I'm Diane Blake, and I also...
Pull the microphone down a little bit, thank you. We're on Granicus. Diane, thank you.
I'm Diane Blake, and I also live at Peanut Pond, around at the trailer park, and we're just concerned what's going to happen to the twenty units that are already there if they decide to just go ahead and take it over and do whatever they want with it.
They can't. It's private property, and the, nobody can do it. It would have to be the owner of the property that would, that would, would have this option, not, not the town and not the developer of the next-door property.
Oh, we're just, you know, we're all concerned about our mobiles, you know, being there, and we love it there, and we've been there for many years.
Yes.
And I don't want to have anything to be said, we're out in just a few years, or whatever it is, because I'm planning to stay there a very long time.
Well, and I'm sure that you can, as, as long as the property does not sell, so it would have to be up to the owner.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll, we'll start again. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? For a second time, is there anyone else who would like to speak? And for a third time, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, I'm going to ask the applicant to come up, and perhaps you've been listening to some of the concerns. Is there anything you'd like to add?
In regards to the environmental concerns, there's all sorts of rules and regulations that we have to comply with. I understand the gentlemen's want for the, to read the report, but as Ms. McKay indicated, it's not public record nor is it required. Having gone through this many times, we will comply with all the regulations and municipal bylaws that are required for that.
I can assure you.
She will make sure.
In regards to Gemma asking for statistical analysis of three-bedroom homes, I've yet to find any statistical analysis in regards to what homeowners want. As an example, we built a condo that had a unit that was three-hundred-and-seventy-eight square feet, and we had downsizers buy those homes, and we thought it would be for some home buyers. I'm not intending to do a poll, but I'm sure there's a lot of empty nesters in Asous that live in three-bedroom homes. So, again, our development will have homes with masters on the main. It will have homes that'll have three bedrooms upstairs that people are required to walk stairs with. My parents are empty nesters, and they have several bedrooms. My mother uses one for quilting, one for a grandchild, and one that they sleep in. So, as far as I'm aware, there's no statistical data that says what a homeowner of what age category is actually looking to buy. And so, in regards to the trail, and Ms. McKay, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, the idea is to provide the town with funds and lieu. I understand that it's the town's responsibility to look at the future and plan ahead, and I know this is the town's opportunity to get some funds in the event. Maybe it's two, three years, five years, ten years, twenty years, we, nobody knows, but there's money in the coffers for the town to eventually do what it, what the future vision for, for it is. So, whether it happens now or later, from our perspective, I think the town is doing the right thing by collecting funds from us. I think at some point in the future, I think it'd be a great added feature around Peanut Pond. Right now, as the people have indicated, it's, it's not feasible, because it's private property. So, I'm not sure how else to put closure on the trail, except the fact that, yeah, the trail won't be built, but the town will have money to do so when they feel the timing's right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, I will, I will declare that this public hearing is closed. Thank you very much for coming.